Loss me in order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I'm asking for a moment of silence for the tragedies in Florida and the prayers for all the residents down there, that they make it all safely. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Paul Jinderski.
Here.
Jamie Kendall.
Present.
Darcy McSwain.
Present.
Edgar Tiedoff.
Present.
Michael Nesbit.
Present.
Kathy Harris.
Present.
Troy Freed.
Present.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Public comment?
Yeah, um, add a drone show.
Add what?
Drone show.
To what?
To the agenda to talk about.
To the agenda to talk about. What's public, what do you mean about public comment?
Uh, the meeting starts off with public comment.
We haven't got there yet, that's next.
Yeah, that's, that's next. Thank you, sir.
And then, also drainage. Add.
A motion is needed.
Yes, you need to make the motions for all this stuff.
Alright, I'll motion put drone show on the agenda.
I'll second it.
All of us in favor?
Nope.
Roll call.
Paul Jinderski.
Yes.
Jamie Kendall.
Yes.
Darcy McSwain.
Yes.
Edgar Tiedoff.
No.
Michael Nesbit.
No.
Kathy Harris.
No.
Troy Freed.
Yes.
And second, I'll motion to put drainage on it.
Hold on, I'm still trying to figure. So that's item, that'd be F? G.
Yep, we need a motion to add G.
Yeah, I motion put drainage on.
Is this new drainage?
Or we discussed? To talk about drainage.
Okay.
In the building.
Separate, oh, as a whole?
Yeah, I was gonna...
I'll second it, okay.
Paul Jinderski. Jamie Kendall.
Yes.
Darcy McSwain.
Yes.
Edgar Tiedoff.
No.
Michael Nesbit.
No.
Kathy Harris.
No.
Troy Freed.
Yes.
What was that called again?
Drainage.
Drainage. Drainage on where?
Just general drainage.
Any announcements, public comment?
We have to approve the agenda.
Sorry.
My name is Mark.
I'll make a moment of approve the agenda.
All support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Public comment?
Yes. My name is Mark Westlock. I live at twelve sixty North Main Street. Uh, my first question. Mister President, are you involved in a village lawsuit that has something to do with political signs?
No comment.
Okay, I'll assume that's a yes.
Mister, Mister Westlock, this is public comment. We do not have to answer your questions, okay?
It's, I'm talking.
Say what you gotta say.
Okay. I assume then the answer is yes, since it's been on the news. Who will pay for legal fees if we do have a lawsuit? Good question. Is it going to be the village?
Yes, the village taxpayers.
I think, you know, the voters deserve an answer to both of those questions. Now, we got an answer to the second question, but we have the answer to the first question. Okay, I guess we don't. Mister Village Manager.
Sir.
Same question. Are you involved in a legal lawsuit that is, is, um, is around political signs?
Yes.
And will the village be paying for the legal fees for that lawsuit?
Yes.
Now, let me understand this. The village is paying for legal lawsuits for political signs, and they can't fix my roads. I have a problem with that, and so should the, so should the voters.
Right. Ask him who's starving.
I'm talking. Thank you. Mister Kendall, are you going to be running for President as a write-in candidate for the village?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Come on up.
Julie Jastromowski, I addressed you the last meeting because I didn't know Troy Freed, and I was addressing the issues with the drainage that I felt that needed to be attended. I have a letter here I'd like to read from the city of Saginaw regarding Troy Freed in a professional reference to whom it may concern. I am writing to wholeheartedly recommend Troy Freed for recognition of his extensive expertise and invaluable contributions to the water and sewer industry. With over forty years of experience primarily focused on distribution and transmission water systems, as well as sewer collection and culverts, Troy has consistently demonstrated exceptional knowledge and skill in his field. Throughout his tenure and services provided to the city of Saginaw's Public Services Division, Troy has become a trusted expert for numerous projects and maintenance initiatives. His ability to tackle complex challenges has led local engineering firms to speak his insights for design and construction advice on projects that often require innovative solutions. Over fourteen years, the city of Saginaw has collaborated with Troy and his company on variety of projects, including sewer cleaning and televising, water main, pipe bursting, and advanced trenchless technologies. Troy's dedication to sharing his knowledge extends beyond his immediate responsibilities. He has served as a guest speaker at many public works, assemblies, offering presentations that educate engineers and contractors alike. His passion for monitoring others in this industry is evident and has left a lasting impact on those fortunate enough to attend his sessions and work with him on projects. Not only is Troy an extraordinary professional, but he is also a remarkable individual whose integrity and commitment to his work inspire those around him. Troy also brings the same level of excellence and dedication to any opportunity he pursues. I strongly endorse Troy Freed and am confident that he will exceed expectations for any challenge that may arise. I have the contact information, phone numbers, and emails if anybody's interested. This is sincerely Philip Carwatt, P.E., City of Saginaw Public Service Director. When I read this, I was so impressed because this is somebody that I feel is going to be an asset in helping out the village for some of the issues that we've got going on.
Hi, Rick Sproul, six oh eight West Bell, and I was here in the last meeting about the issue of the work being done when the water was run through at my place. And it's streaming down the side of my house because it wasn't built back up where it used to be. And with the work that has been done over numerous times there, the sidewalk has dropped, it's slanted in, brings water from outside areas right into that spot, and that's why it runs down the way it does. That needs to be fixed. I was told that the engineers and contractor would be in touch with me within short time, and I have had no contact whatsoever since.
Since the last month? Nobody's even been out to your house since you complained?
Nope, no one's been to the house, no one's contacted me, nothing. So that's why I'm here again tonight. I'm wondering why no one can step up and do what they said they're going to do.
Lack of concern.
Jamie, can you say what you've done? Next minute.
It was supposed to be Spicer and contractor.
I'll tell you tomorrow.
Pardon? I asked Spicer to be out there. I was told that they will.
It's local. Eight six five. Thank you. We'll be looking into it, thank you.
Mister Walker.
Hey, I have a question for the board. I heard a rumor this week that, um, I don't know if I ruffled feathers last month or what I did, but I was supposedly blackballed from doing any work in the village for the DPW. Is there any truth in that?
You didn't say that, Mister Hartman? You didn't tell anybody that you weren't to use Ray Walker anymore?
Hey, this is public comment.
Nope, nope, this is public comment. I just wanna know if, if somebody on this board told the DPW not to use Walker X meeting.
It's Ray Walker.
Could you state your name?
Uh, Ray Walker.
I don't have a say on who you choose as contractor.
What do you mean you don't have a say? If you want somebody to bring diamond dust in, you don't have no say in it to the ball field or nothing?
No, 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 that's not what I'm getting at. I just wanna know if, if it's true or if it's not.
Is it true?
This is, this is the school.
Did you say it to DPW?
I said Mister Walker coming at us for outside the village water rates was unnecessary.
No, I ask a question. Why we're paying so much?
I spoke with him privately, face to face at the village office, and explained why.
No, you said you had a five million dollar budget that you had about, so you didn't explain to me exactly why we're being charged so much for our water.
Here you are, sir. There's your answer.
What, you just make this up today?
That's the independent third party hired during a grant from the village that explains why our water rates are where they are and where they're...
Why didn't, why didn't you just tell me then?
I, I did.
No, you didn't.
Yeah, yeah, I did.
I wouldn't have got it last month.
Right in front of a margarita.
No, you said, "I'll get back with you." Did you get back with me? No, that's why I was here last month. That's the only thing. And, and if you blackball me...
I don't have that power, Mister Walker.
Did you, did you mention any of the DPW?
Did you mention that any of the DPW?
What did you say?
DPW should know.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Speak up.
This is public comment.
Why?
That means everybody in the council needs to quiet.
We can't, freedom of speech, you can't talk.
Public comment.
Public comment.
Public comment.
We explained to everybody last time it was public comment. Now you guys gotta follow the rules, not at all.
If you can't follow the rules, I'm gonna start dismissing people. Asking she follow the walkie to your vehicle.
That's what you told them.
Yep.
I thought it was out of line the way that we had a private conversation, and then you brought it here.
No, you finally give me the information now.
Okay.
Okay?
That's how you see it, Mister Walker?
No answer. No answer.
He answered.
Mister Question, it's freedom of speech.
Paul, if you cannot control yourself, that's your last warning.
Oh, really?
Paul.
Thank you.
We'll get through this, let's just...
And that goes for the audience too, please. Who is that?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
He's next. Oh, okay. You go ahead.
Mister McPhail.
So I thought the rule was, from when I was on board, James McPhail, three seventeen South Saginaw Street, that you don't have to comment, but you have the right to comment.
Correct.
So, you're wrong, Mister President. They can comment on what we're saying. They don't have to keep their mouths shut.
That's fine.
So, I, I wrote this whole thing up, but I'm not gonna go through it 'cause it just proved my point. I've been asking for sixteen, eighteen years to have the DPW and the village come out and look at my road, and I've been told over and over, "We'll get there, this town is in a floodplain, yes, that drain has always been a problem, we'll look at it," and the most frustrating recently from Don was, "It drains eventually." Now, whenever time we ask, I've been through Hellmead, Matt Lane, Hurt, three different village councils, and I was even on a council when I was pulled in the back room because it was, I was told it was conflict of interest. I can't discuss my own property taxes or anything. But, uh, we keep getting kicked down the road. Every single issue is kicked down the road. The last council, what did we say? I brought it up and I, I emphatically, I had it on the, on the docket, we read it off, everybody was like, "Yeah, we're gonna look at it," right? Everybody was pretty much in agreement, "We gotta look at this." The only person that stopped out three days later, a week later, was Troy. Nobody did anything. I've been asking for the, the grass where they cut out the tree and then came back in and dug up the yard for the water, back in June when they were doing the water lines. I called, I called Donna, and I told, I sent you, I called you and left a message for you. I said, "Hey, this has gotta be leveled across the road. They did beautiful work. They leveled it out, hydroceded. Ours looks like crap. My side of the road looks terrible." Donna, or Hurt, you drove by after I sent that thing in, and you took a picture of it. It's still brown where the tree was because the wood chips deplete all the nitrogen. They didn't haul anything out, they just mounted it up and walked off. Over the years, when I've asked for that drain to be fixed, you know what the DPW did? The very most they did was come out with a shovel, dig a little bit out, make a show, and I thought they were actually doing something over the years. I watched them do it over four times. It's five foot deep in this big around. They didn't do shit. They didn't do nothing. They were just making a show. We had to vacuum that out, put a water jet in there, put a camera in there. They haven't been doing nothing but kicking it down the road to everybody else. And that's what, we can't table it anymore, we can't just say, "We'll get to it, we'll get back with you, or it's in a floodplain and it drains." Fix it. Fix it. Because the sidewalk is now bad because of the drainage. That, that, that water that doesn't drain down that drain washed up and completely destroyed the sidewalk. That drain that doesn't work completely destroyed that road. So thirty-five hundred to call out a vacuum truck and a water jet and a camera. About thirty more seconds. Yeah. That's costing about thirty thousand dollars now. Because we kick it down the road to the next administration over and over and over. You guys gotta demand more. You gotta stand up and demand more.
You, you can.
Oh, really? Somebody says we can't, and then...
It's not that you can't. If, if they address you personally, you don't have to respond in attack.
So I'm not allowed to add my comments to this?
You can.
Okay. If it's helpful. Want to be threatened by somebody again, so kick out of here. But I'm just wondering why, I'm just wondering why this hasn't been addressed. You been in here how long? How many years you been here?
Five years.
Five years. In five years, he's, he was sitting on council when you were here?
Correct.
Yeah. So why wasn't it addressed? Why did Troy have to do it? Why, why did he have to do it versus you?
I'd like to know why. This, I've been on this council for four years, and this last month was the first I've heard of this.
Yeah, because I don't come every, every meeting.
Yes, you do. You're every meeting.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, stop it right now because I've only been to four meetings in the last two years. Okay?
Okay. I'll be sure to check the minutes on that.
Check 'em.
I will.
But it's very obvious that there's very, there's personal issues going on here. There's very personal. The three of you just voting no, 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 discussing a budget, twenty thousand dollar frivolous expenditure, you don't even wanna talk about it, discussing the drain that they were just doing, you don't wanna talk about it. This is what we're talking about. Kick it down the road, guys.
Mister McPhail, Mister McPhail, I'm a leader, not a follower.
Really?
Right.
Because it was pretty obvious that the three of you are incoherent. We talked about the drone show.
Can we get out of a meeting, or is this a politician's meeting?
No, I'm trying to save money for this village. I'm trying to, I'm trying to protect my investment.
Alright.
My investment in this community.
You know, I'm gonna be honest. I'm the one that wanted Troy Freed on this board, and you know it. And I wanna know what everybody is afraid of. Because he's coming in to help us, not take anybody's job.
He's been, he's been negative the whole freaking time he's been here, just like the one on the other end.
You better look in the mirror.
Negative, he hasn't even had a chance.
The worst cop you ever had, just don't.
Jim, Jim was here, Jim was here last month with a complaint.
Can we get back to the public comment, please?
Jim was here last month with a complaint. Jamie, you said you were willing to look into it, and you not a yes with it. The only one who looked into it was this guy down here.
Jamie was out there.
Jamie came out.
So why wasn't something done?
I went up, knocked on his door to talk to him.
Did you contact the village manager?
We did. Did you ever get, get back, say, "You shouldn't even be commenting."
That's what I'm asking you.
You need, you didn't even go down and talk to the homeowner's house if you were supposed to. So don't even go there. Keep it zipping your lip.
That's the problem right there.
Pretty easy to follow, though. They said they were gonna do it. Nobody did. He came in, Troy came in and said, "This is my field, I'm an expert in this, I can help." He ended up calling city sewer when the DPW said they were gonna do it. He, he collaborated and, and got the schedule for both to be there. He ran the show. He got it done. He came, he's the one that got everything done.
So is there a complaint?
He doesn't have the authorization to do that.
If it's maintenance, you do. They went through, they went through Hurt. We had a meeting before that.
If somebody looked into it, why is there a complaint now?
Why is there a complaint with what?
If this young man looked into it too.
Mister McPhail, I gave you a hand.
But it's not finished. It's not...
Why are you allowing him to clean up the podium?
Do it, okay?
Why are you adding to it? Stop. Just stop.
Just, just sit there right in your, right in your lawn chair in the back of the parade. Go for reelection. Go for reelection, real pride.
Thanks.
My name is Chris Newman, and I live at two twenty-three Wood Lawn Drive. I've been everything in this village you could be, from ambulance billing clerk to village manager to on the council. And the worst thing I heard tonight was that Troy Freed went out and hired someone to come in and fix the drain. I listened to every meeting on, um, YouTube, and I don't remember hearing anything last month about anybody here saying, "Let's get some bids, let's see who we can get, and let's get that drain." So that means Mister Freed, you did that all on your own. And I'm assuming, oh, did you have a meeting with him and set it up?
I, I had a meeting with him, yes.
And did you give him permission to spend? Well, you can't give him permission to spend money. You guys never gave him permission to spend money. He cannot go out and spend money on his own.
I didn't.
He can't. You cannot spend village fund without you vote. You never spend?
He never spent a dime out of his own pockets.
Well, you should. You should pay for the whole thing because you guys didn't approve it.
Not a dime.
Listen, listen to me. Did you get it done for free?
Miss Newman?
Yes?
He sent an email approving it with the contractor.
I said, I said, "Get that drain done," and then while there, Mister Freed said, "Let's do this one, let's do this one, let's do..." Told Mister Diffen and Mister Thurston, "Let's do this one, this one, this one, this one." I didn't know about it till the end of the day, when Mister Thurston came and said...
Okay, so you approved one drain?
Yep.
You can do that.
We just got the bill.
You can't.
We just got the bill for thirty-three hundred dollars.
You can't do it unless you have four votes behind you on this council to spend money. You can't go out and spend money, helter-skelter. That's, that's not what I came here to talk about, but when I heard that, I kind of went through the roof, I'm sorry. But I came here to say I do listen to every meeting, and I am embarrassed, and I am appalled at the way this council fights and acts. I've never seen anything like it. I worked here for thirty-one years. I've never seen anything like this. I don't know why you can't get along. He sees three and four, I see four and three. When I look up here, I see you, 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 and you, and you all vote the same. You, you, you vote the same. I don't see any difference between the two. But somebody here has four people, and are you telling me you never get together and discuss things? You never, it sounded so cut and dried tonight. It was unbelievable. And so, if four people are meeting, that's illegal. You cannot do that. And I think you all need to take a class in what a council is for and what a council does, because you're all getting way too involved in everything. You have no business being with the employees. The employees are not your responsibility. You cannot talk to them. You cannot, I mean, you talk to them on the street, see them on the street, but you can't go up to them, tell them, tell them what to do. This is a village manager form of government here. The village manager is in charge of all the employees, all the hiring and firing, and you hire the manager. And I think you all, I hope you all know that. But as far as money goes, you set the budget, and when you set the budget, you didn't include any drainage because I don't think you were here. But you didn't include any drainage in that budget. So you can't in the middle of the year, all of a sudden, up and decide, "We're going to do this," unless you write a budget amendment. Have you ever written a budget amendment, any of you? Not that I have.
You don't have the time of day like some people have.
It's not the time of day. All you have to do is ask for it.
I don't just got real jobs.
All, all he has to do, I have a real job too, okay? All he has, all you have to do is ask him at a meeting that you would like to do this the next time, or however long it takes to get the money together and decide what you're gonna do. You will get an amendment to the budget, and then you can change it, and then you can do it. But you don't, in the middle of a budget year, all of a sudden, start changing the budget you set. Look at the budget. Look at that budget and see what you decided to do this year. Is that getting done? I think it is. From what I see, it's all getting done. You can't, just because he was appointed in the middle of the year and comes in and decides to do a ditch, saying, "Oh, let's do a ditch." It's not in your budget. You don't have the money for it.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Okay. Now, this has been going on, this has been flooding his property and ruining his house and his yard and whatever for years. So let, so, so if this is an emergency like this, I mean, it needed to be done a long time ago, and he's got a serious complaint. His house, his value of his house is going down. So now if a water main breaks in the middle of the night, is that any different than what's going on there? I mean, it's like an emergency, it's the same thing. It needs to be fixed. It shouldn't have been fixed a long time ago. It's infrastructure.
Well, I understand. Really, tell me about it. Um, but you didn't budget to do any drainage or ditch work. That's not an emergency.
That is an emergency. Somebody's home is flooded now, that's pretty serious.
There's no water. I mean, serious. There's been no water this year. How can it be an emergency this year? Fix it next year. That's what you wanna do. You're the council, you decide. But you don't go out and go beyond what he told you to do and spend that money. It's something...
Three minutes.
You can't do it.
Mister McPhail had more than, way more than three minutes, so...
Yeah.
I've been giving everybody at least five.
Mister McPhail, I don't see anything wrong with your judgment. I think it looks very good. But what you're complaining about, there's one tree left. Is that the tree you want taken down?
No, I'm not worried about the tree. I'm saying...
You don't want the tree.
The, the tree is heeding the sidewalk, but I'm...
It is. The tree's gonna have to go to make the sidewalk go down.
Right. But you don't, you, you can't just take out the tree. You gotta take out the tree, fix the entire sidewalk, the part that's heaved down there, the part that's heaving here, and then bring the new air up to love.
I understand how that works.
The side of the sidewalk is being washed out.
I should be talking to him. But yeah, but yeah, now I understand. I understand what you're saying, but I'm telling you, there is trouble with the sidewalk for a long time.
Right, we did that.
Yeah. Did you replace that one?
Okay, wrap this up, please.
I didn't plant a tree.
Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to say, I sure hope you guys can get it together and try to agree on things that need to be done, and please do it for the good of the village. No personal vendettas, because there's a lot of them on here. You should come in here with a clear and open mind. You need to decide what's best for the entire village, not one person. You can't deal that way. You can't do...
I think we all know this, and the time is...
I don't think you do know. I don't think you do know it, because I listen to you every month. So, yeah.
Appreciate your comments.
It's, um, it's my comments, not yours.
I said, "I appreciate it."
Okay, thank you. So I hope you do what's right. I really do, because I see this place falling apart, and it breaks my heart. Just breaks my heart, because it's never been like this in the entire time that I was here, or when I was on the council, or anything. So please pay attention to what you're doing. Don't just listen to each other, listen to the people, and do what's best for the people. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Lushard.
Hi, my name is Tim Lushard. I live at one twenty Wood Lawn. Mrs. Newman just stole some of my thunder because we're gonna talk about the role of a councilperson. After last meeting, I asked Mister Hurt, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, about what kind of information you get, when you are elected or appointed to the council. Um, about what kind of information you get when you are elected or appointed to the council. Uh, I understand you get a letter immediately that tells you how the meetings are run, that a long time ago, Robert's Rules of Order were adopted. And you use parliamentary procedure. And that you get information from the Michigan Municipal League that helps you figure out what your role is as a councilperson. Now, the president has a totally different role and, and he can take information or get information from the Michigan Municipal League at the same time. One of the things that I found out when I was reading, and it didn't take me any more than fifteen or twenty minutes, was that part of Robert's Rules of Order says, communication must always remain respectful. Now, something happened at the last meeting that I was at that didn't even come close to being respectful. If you have, if you have a problem with what, how Mr. Tidoff handled picking up signs that's your opinion, you have, you have all the right in the world to express it. You think he overstepped his bounds of picking up signs because he's a mayor? That's your opinion, you have, you can express it. But when you go to the personal attack, that's beyond the pale. That is not communication, that's respectful. That's personal, mean spirited and nasty. And it needs to be called out. I can remember, I'm old, I'm seventy-five years old, I can remember reading in history class about the McCarthy hearings. And Joe McCarthy attacked lots and lots of people with no, with no basis of it at all. Until an army interrogator looked at him and said, sir, have you no decency? That's exactly how I felt when I left that meeting last week, last month. Sir, have you no decency? I'm willing to bet that if you looked around this group right here, you would find someone who either themselves or have a family member or have a very close friend who has fought a battle with alcohol use or with drug usage or with addiction of any kind. But for to try and embarrass someone and attack them, you've attacked everybody in this community that fights the same fight.
Yes.
That has to stop. And council, if it happens again, I hope you call them out. Because you have the power to call them out. And if the, and if Ann asks for them to be exited out or, I hope you do your job and take them out of this meeting. Because we do not need to have to put up with that crap. Quite frankly, Mr. Jenderstie, you owe this village an apology.
Absolutely.
For your words last month.
There's another one right there.
I'm, I'm done.
You're good, you're done. You've been more than enough, three figure of comments, but.
I'll make it short and sweet. My name is Harold Smith, I go by Goats, two oh six East North Street. I listened to Judy when she read that letter and I noticed there was people up here that never could, you can't repeat one word she said. And you know who you are, it's the three that you people all agree with. What's the matter with you, Candy, everybody get along in this room? No, we gotta pick on sides.
You agree with the four, yeah.
Not all the time, I don't.
I don't agree with the three all the time.
You, you get up there, you shouldn't even have a pop political view in you because you're the clerk.
Did I give up my First Amendment rights?
No, you're a clerk.
Let's get some order here. You got any more public comments? Sure, why not?
I forgot to say, I'm gonna say it from right here. Hart is the best manager we have ever had. I'm gonna tell you, I worked with them all. When I started here, there was no manager. And it was just a helter skelter, they were pretty good. But there were seven of them and we had to deal with all seven if you worked in the office. And I've been through every manager. He is by far the best, has gotten the most money. Um, he's probably has some faults, you know, I, I won't. But really, you don't know what you have, you really don't know what you have. And, uh, yeah, the money he's earned in this town is phenomenal. And I don't know if you gave him a raise the last three years. I, the last year I was here, we gave him a raise.
You know what?
I don't know if he's had one since.
You're pushing it again. I mean, you've had what, six, eight minutes the last time?
I'm pushing it again? Oh.
Paul, you're kind of running this meeting, I am.
Yes.
Bring him back to the podium, give her the three minutes.
Okay. Okay, nevermind. He's great and you should appreciate that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Spicer Engineer Report.
Do you have a TMF first? Yeah, go ahead. Do that first, he's crazy up.
I'll just say, I'll be reading. And after that, the TMF side of things and I'll let Mark speak on the, uh, other larger projects we've got going on. So if you haven't met me, I'm Austin, Alexander and Spicer, uh, design engineer, helping out with the TMF crank side of things. To date, we've located around three hundred and thirty of the curb boxes that we identified for, uh, hydro excavation and physical inspections. We've got about thirty-five more to go. DPW's helping us do a second pass on those that are a little bit harder to find the first time. So once we have those all located and surveyed, uh, we have our bidding documents ready to go, so we'll send it out for bid, see what we get back. Uh, try and get moving on that project to get us in place for training that data, finding those lead and galvanized services and then putting together a project plan to get them replaced. So things are moving along pretty quickly. Just a big shout out to the DPW for helping us with that.
Do you have a tentative date, someone else is gonna go up for bids?
In the next, in the next month or so.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So probably go next month, this time of year.
It really comes down to deciding those last couple of services. So I'm thinking, um, by next meeting, we should have a more substantial, I'll say, more red.
Okay.
Are we extending the water out beyond the village's limits now? I think that's what it says there, the assessment of the extension of the water.
No, it was, uh, analyzed. There were, was a request and we had.
We have a counter regarding the proposed special assessment district, I think the road water need extension.
There was a request and a retraction, uh, once they realized the special assessment district and every, um, every resident would have to pay for it. And the connection fee and things like that. And we have a second request out on Dempsey, people wanting that water. But it'd take, I think it takes over fifty-one percent of the households. So if there's a husband and wife, they, they both get a vote, fifty-one percent have to agree to it.
Okay, um, so on the code of ordinance update, um, we've been continuing to meet with the planning commission, um, each month going through two and three chapters at a time. Um, next week we'll go through three chapters. Um, it's moving along, like we said, that's about a two-year process, we're gonna be doing that one. Um, the twenty twenty-five water systems, um, we're just waiting to get the historical and shipper requirements completed from the archaeology, archaeolat.
Yep.
Archaeologist, that's where it is. So, and then we gotta still wrap up that rural development application. And, um, the plans and bid documents are getting closed, but we can't put that out for bids until after, um, rural development. We gotta get that application done. Um, that's gonna be the, the last thing before we get that out. We're kind of planning to get that out for bids, probably give a great margin next year for construction of next year as well. Um, we also have the safer routes to school, um, engineers agreement on the agenda tonight. Um, when, when we did apply for that, we still did have to, um, do a quarterly report just because they, you know, they wanna know if we're still pursuing it or not. At this point, we just wanted to save the village's opportunity to submit for that. So we filled that up and just said, nothing's really happening at this time, but you're still interested. Um, and then also, um, we're still working on finalizing punch list items from phase one. Um, before the meeting today, I went through the village and looked at some that were on the list. Um, obviously I didn't get to Rick's here yet, um. But we'll get that set up. From what I saw on the list, we had probably about ten items. And I saw there's three still need to be done. One I just need to follow up on again and then another one with Rick I need to follow up on. I don't really, don't know the details on this yet, so we'll get with him and then I'll get with the contractor. I'd like to say we'll have those things wrapped up.
Well, we'd love to talk about the timeline is finishing this up.
Well, I would think this fall still, just to get everything done. The items I saw today were very minor. I gotta meet with him to see what his is, I don't know the full details on that one.
And we, we also have to meet with Brian Wenley, has a hundred and forty thousand dollars in contingency fee that we aren't sure how we can, uh, spend the funds or use the funds. Uh, so Brian, Mitch and Mark and I are trying to meet within the next couple of weeks to see what that a hundred and forty.
Wenley's what, drink commission?
Yeah. Brian is.
So can we add water lines? Can we add water main? I mean, if we can knock off some of the main that's supposed to be in phase two over on that side. And that way we can add something next spring on this side without, you know, using.
Yeah.
Extra money, maybe try to knock off over there. But, uh, Brian hasn't said how we can use that fund.
I think that's the last of the active things we got going. So if there's any other questions or anything.
You did take down the gentleman.
Yeah, I got his, he gave me his phone number as well, so I'll, I'll. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman's approval for September eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion to accept the minutes for September eleventh, twenty twenty-four for the village council.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Commission and committee reports. I made downtown development authority for October fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Any word on the water fountain or fireplace feature? Nope. Uh, reached out to, um, Central Michigan Construction, they did concrete and designs like that, hoping to get them in. I did talk to TJ Fries about, uh, the boulevard paving before the Christmas parade. Uh, he's gonna try to call the asphalt plant, see if they can get it in this year. Hope to have that next week. Scott took it out here, they're in Inlay City. Um, I haven't heard from Et yet on, uh, the feature. Uh, but I would also, I think DDA intend to come to November meeting to talk to you guys about it because it would require a one day removing kiosk is where they're thinking. But obviously, that is yours and not theirs.
What about the sign? Would you hear any word about the sign?
I think, uh, they've kind of moved on from that for the year, the signage, new signage. Um, they're still stuck on their walnut wood or whatever that wood is in black, modern look. Um, but they, I think they wanna come in November to also talk about that.
I'll approve the median minutes of the downtown development authority, uh, October fourth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Parks and Rec Committee, no parks meeting. See, planning commission, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make a motion to accept the planning commission minutes of, uh, the September nineteenth meeting.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Communications. Second of parks. Any discussion? Nothing? I had a bee in this bowl. Water sewer rate report.
This is the water rate study from John Casey, you guys have had this since May. Uh, just wanted to refresh you after last month on what, what we're looking at. Uh, this is an independent third party, he's one of the best in the business statewide. Uh, when the city of New York, and I'm talking Manhattan, has water rate studies, this is the guy they call. Um, and this is what he sees on our funding levels based on the projects that we already have or completed. This is not something I, you know, this is, this is a tough decision you guys are gonna have to make going forward. If I read this correctly, which I believe I did, over the next seven years, he's looking at a ten percent increase on water rates before it flattens out, to pay for what we've done. This isn't adding on drainage, this isn't adding on special pet projects. This is where we're at right now. Based on what we have in the bank, what we owe and what we're bringing in.
Is that not including any grants or any help from the government, is that what you said?
Uh, he was sent the grants, um, obviously those are kind of grants you can't just spend any way you want. You know, the million has to go towards this phase two, what, lead and copper. Um, safe routes has to go to safe route, so it's not gonna really change the fund level.
And for people to understand, so sewer rates and water rates is O and M, operations. None of that money goes in the general fund and we can't make money on it? It's just to operate and maintain it, correct, Eric?
Correct.
So some people lose track of that.
Yep.
So that means we have to raise it ten percent each year, right?
That's what he's requesting and that's what, in January, you guys analyzed the water rates. And this is, we've kind of tried to level it off and it kind of took a couple of years where we stayed low just because, uh, the human element and, and, um, trying to budget smartly to save funds so we don't have to raise rates. He explains it all right here. This is a ten-year forecast based on the twenty twenty-five adopted budget, he meant twenty twenty-four, I imagine. He has inflation rates, kind of, general inflation lower than I'd like to see. Firement's where it's supposed to be. It's mostly the water fund. I think the sewer fund, depending on which projects we end up moving forward with, can, is self-sufficient at this point, the water fund is not.
We guess get through the next phase and see where we are, huh?
Yeah. He's one of those no-nonsense guys, there's no feelings, it's just dollars, dollars and cents, all business. He doesn't care about the human element. It's about the numbers.
So it says, I think, nine hundred and fifty-one customers, roughly, what are we, every three months, what are we getting in the ready to serve charge right now?
I'd have to look at that.
Okay.
If I had it off the top of my head and I don't have B S N A on this computer.
Alright.
But I could have that to you tomorrow.
And then the minimum charge.
And, and going forward, I like to look at ready to serve as a lot of municipalities, capital improvement, it's really what it is. It's not necessarily, hey, we're doing this so we can shut you on, shut you off. It's so we can pay for projects that we have done, haven't done, are going to do. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're, you're fine now. The minimum right now is five thousand gallons a quarter, thirty-four ninety-five. What are we, what do we get?
What do we bring in?
No. What do we pay for that from the water authority?
What do we pay? Does the water authority?
Do they charge per thousand gallons or five?
Uh, we pay monthly to the city. It's in your, uh, you probably see it in here.
I didn't, I couldn't find it anywhere, so.
Swan Creek, it's.
No, yeah, I know.
The S's.
Do they charge by gallon usage or?
I, Don, do you have that?
I have. They they charge the same way you do, and they charge your readiness to serve.
So it's about nineteen thousand eleven hundred dollars a month that we pay.
So that's total, that's 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 their ready to serve fee and gallon usage.
Twenty thousand dollars. Yep. Yep.
Their bills set up the same thing, there's a flat rate for readiness to serve for the authority and then there's a.
Well, we don't, you don't have the flat rate information?
Not with you right now, no.
Okay.
And there's expected to go up eight percent a year.
And they analyze, and they analyze every three years, so it'll be eight, 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 and then the next analyzation, kind of the same company, they use a different uh competitor out of, I thought they're out of Atlanta. Uh but it'll probably be seven, 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 and it's based on their projects, and truth be told, it's loss of water customer. You know, back when the city was booming and they had a ton of people living there, they expected this kind of pain, well, when people moved out in flight in the lost decade, now they're trying to make up for their services, their projects. And uh it's not as many customers.
Any more discussion on this? We're getting on. Okay, I'm C Hartley, October eleventh event.
Uh touch a truck, October eleventh at Hartley, um I believe the police vehicles will be there, I'm not sure if fire will be there, but a cool event, just a kind of a touch a truck for all ages, don't miss out. Young kids trying to, I think they're trying to just promote Hartley a little bit, what they do and what they provide in the area. Holding snacks and drinks for purchase. Get yourself a Hartley t-shirt.
Been a long time to live in that neighborhood. We just, we just discussed it.
D Local Government Law Enforcement Reporter.
Just sharing this, nothing that you guys don't know, but uh the report is from the University of Michigan, from local government leaders, county sheriffs, local chiefs of police, prosecutors. Regarding the recruitment or retention of police officers and difficulty it is in America. When you demonize an entire profession, not a lot of people want to go into profession, whether it's teaching or the police force, so. Uh just a study from this year, spring of twenty twenty four, and kind of how people feel, something interesting to look at as we look at hiring, losing some, uh losing Ethan, things like that.
Can we get a copy of that?
Sure, you don't mind.
Or his. Yep.
Hey Chief, how many, how many recruits are in the academy right now?
I don't know the exact number, but they usually have around thirty.
Thirty?
But they're all spoken for by the time they get in there.
Those are all other academies besides Zeltor?
They're all the same way, they're all, right now because of the money for um, what do you call it? Hiring before you come, I forget the actual verb. But they're, everybody in there's already got a job, everybody going now, it's not like there's so many people coming into the academy and you get to handpick who you want. It's, if there's one there, like we found out what we had with um Curtis, then that that's what you get, or you find someone you know that's looking for one, then you send them away. Sponsorship, that's all it's for, but that's basically how it works now, but now the sponsorship money's gone. Good state right now, and they had, the governor has not re-upped any more money allocated for sponsorships for departments right now, so maybe it'll change, I don't know.
Me for a while there was a lot of people that were in schooling class here, and then somebody would hook them up after they got the school, and we paid for it, they'd go to wherever.
Oh, you paid for it beforehand.
I'm just saying that they have to be placed in a job ahead of time, saying, okay, we tell you to school, you have to have to work at this place first, a lot of them are going to school and then go instead of getting the seventy thousand hit.
That was before they.
We'll give you a hundred thousand.
That's what we paid on our contract that we did.
We did the schooling and then they would go somewhere else.
Yeah, that's what was the start, when the, all this sponsorship money started and people were doing that, they were going to the smallest municipalities that needed people. Getting a job, getting paid to go to the academy, and then when they're done, saying, oh, I'm gonna go over here and work because they get more money.
Yep.
But since then, we've gotten smarter and we've started making them sign contracts so they can't just leave, or if they do, they have to pay us money back. But again, the problem is, is there's not enough recruits for how many jobs there are available right now, they, a new person that you ever can go wherever they want to. And make whatever money, and these small villages can't compete, which is why we have such movement.
I need a motion on that.
Am I the claims?
A little early for the Christmas tree thing, no? Nine hundred and thirty dollars, is that normal at this time of year? Online code hosting. Who's that?
Well, our code of ordinances are listed online on MinaCode.
There's what dude said.
Oops. Sorry. So our code of ordinances are online for everybody to view, posted on a site called MinaCode, I think they're just bought out. Um so that way people can go online and say, hey, if I wanted to do this, this or that in the village, what are the rules on it?
This shows all the ordinances in that, what you're just saying?
Yep. Yep.
Just to put that on there, it's all twelve hundred bucks.
It's probably, MinaCode is probably the most popular amongst uh all municipalities in the state of Michigan.
Lamar, I get that.
My only question is page four, second from the bottom, the canopy walk treehouse concept?
Yes.
What is the story with that?
So DDA wants to move forward with that, and that was the architectural contract uh to get them out here.
So that's not the actual product, it's just the?
That's the firm, this is the best firm, the guy flew out from, flew in from Philadelphia, um they they did the Midland Tree Canopy. So best in the business.
Do they know where they're gonna, do they have ideas where they want to put it up?
He's designing it right now, and that kind of helped pay for that, the design, and that's the, all that they signed up for is to get the design, and then we gotta figure out fundraising, how to move forward.
So DDA, DDA funds come from where? Is that taxpayer?
Tax increment financing, so if you pay a thousand dollars on your, pay a thousand dollars in taxes on your house, and like Mr. McPhail emailed me saying his taxes went up. Um you wanna know why, I kind of sent him the article from the Free Press. So if your taxes go up because property values increase, that act, and you live in the DDA, so you used to pay a thousand dollars, you're still gonna pay the village a thousand dollars, but say it went up thirty two dollars, that's thirty two dollars goes to the DDA.
So is that everybody in the entire village?
Nope, it's a DDA, it's a district, and you, I can show it to you on G I S if you'd like, but it's a district, mostly business oriented, it's along fifty two corridor and the boulevards. Uh we've had people reach out for facade grants that were just out of the district.
Okay, just seems like a lot of money just for?
They are, they're, they have their own meetings as well.
Do they have a set limit before they have to have council approval?
No, they are bound by state law.
Think you should have got some of these people more involved in it when they were at the park, so they kind of understood more what was going on.
This is very preliminary, that was just to introduce the Katzenbergers to Chris, he, while he's in the state.
No, but I think they would have got a better idea of what it was all about and what it was for, where it was going, so.
I think uh members of that committee are very good friends with Angelo Katzenberger, and they talk regularly, and I get text messages from them, so I I think they're in the loop.
It's only at the planning stages, you said?
We're not even there, we're not even there.
Yeah, but we paid nineteen thousand two hundred dollars for.
The DDA did, yes.
The DDA did.
Well, I understand that, but it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of DDA money.
It's a lot of business tax money.
It's also investing in our community. Where does the business get the money from the community?
State law tax increment financing.
You guys new to this?
Sorry.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills for the month of September in the amount of a hundred forty seven thousand six hundred thirteen dollars sixty nine cents.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Bills are paid.
New business, item A Smith Mobile.
As you know, Mister uh Mister Gary Campbell is retiring at the end of the year. Uh he gave us a list of municipal uh municipal law attorneys to research, this is the first and only one I've received back. By far the best firm in my humble opinion. Uh that we can look, I mean, just have this for now while I get, wait on uh people getting back to me, the other firms, I guess. Uh but this is the kind of work you're gonna get from them, it's very thorough, tells you all, you want the municipalities that they represent, gives you all that, gives you their price. Uh all their experience, open meeting laws, election laws, public record laws, public contracting, franchise law, solid, solid waste man use, public financing ordinances, et cetera. And then a synopsis of litigation, which they have represented a municipal client, which is kind of long, extensive. References, um as I mentioned before, and you'll take it for what it's worth, I I know Adam Florrie personally, he wanted to be here tonight, he's on his honeymoon, he got married on Saturday, I was not invited, we're not that close.
I graduated high school with his sister, older sister, he's much younger than I am. Um but I don't know him that well, what I know is an Owasso kid, local. Graduated from Michigan State in political science and uh College of Law.
And we did, the planning commission has used him, and he did a very thorough job, and uh didn't even charge us, so that's the type of person and uh you're gonna get. Uh leader of the firm, David Meyer, uh is probably one of the prominent, I would say, municipal law attorneys in the area.
Yes, he's younger than I am. Yeah, David, excellent job, I've worked with him over the years.
So this is my recommendation, but I will get another quote for you guys to review next month. If you feel so inclined to to believe that I know what I'm talking about as far as uh municipal law firms, we can move forward, if not, we can, we can table this for a month and I'll bring you some more information.
I mean, what are our other options?
Uh I can't remember all of them that you referred uh mentioned last month.
Yeah, I gave about half, uh Gary Campbell, I guess the village attorney, and by the way, I want to say, I want to thank all of you for the years I've served you as your village attorney, so.
How long have you been, how long have you been here?
Uh well, I've I've been representing townships and villages for over forty years.
This township?
This township, probably about twenty years. So uh and I I've always enjoyed working with all the various managers we've had over the years, so it's been a good experience. Yeah, I had about half dozen people I mentioned, there aren't that many uh local municipal attorneys in the area, so that's always a problem, so I gave those names that I'm aware of, I checked with a couple of their attorneys.
So you got Gus, L Smith Junior, and Amy Lust, Gilbert Smith, Mission Ave in Saginaw, you got Karen Braun and Kendrick up in Fashion Square Boulevard in Saginaw, you got Shepherd of Smith and Booker up in Bay City, so.
They said we got a bazillion, I mean.
Yeah, they, they, they just mentioned, I don't know the quality of each one, and also, you know, attorneys charge different fees also, so.
They say who's gonna give us more bang for our buck?
No, I would, I could do it. But uh but yeah, I think they they, everybody's different, that's why, you know, getting the resumes, you find out what the rates are, and by getting a few more, you get more of an idea, you know, of what is the going rate and what would satisfy the council, so.
Let's see if I can get the other three to respond and kick up a little uh synopsis like this, I hope it's the same, just to show the quality of what their their work is, but.
Yeah, cause I know they also, the other attorneys that do it are all this, out of the area, down there, down in Rochester and, you know, Lansing and.
And you'll see in your uh M M L, the Review Magazine, all those like the.
They advertise, yeah.
They're all advertising, they're Detroit, Grand Rapids, Lansing, um.
And I can guarantee you also, their fees are gonna be much higher also, since they're working, working downstream.
Two hundred, two fifty an hour.
Right.
Are we able to find out from like Chesne, Richline, Thomas, who they use?
Uh use me, I represent um well twenty villages, townships, most of the townships, county, Saginaw, and also represent townships up north also, so.
Have they found a replacement, who do you have, any of those, close to us at least?
Well, so, uh no, they're still looking, I I I'm not retired till December thirty first, so um uh you know, it's a matter of, you know, what, how long it's gonna take them. Some of, some people are doing this individually, some I would point out, RFPs, which basically what, that's what Hart did, is put out RFPs to these firms, ask them to submit proposals to represent the village. And I've uh prepared a few RFPs for some other townships, wanted a little more guidance on that, but. But yeah, it's 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 a search, and and as I say, there aren't a lot of attorneys around who do this kind of work, and that that makes it more difficult to get more variety.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B Benton Street Drain.
Uh construction's complete on the Benton Street Drain, this is the village's portion that we are required to pay, uh thirteen thousand five hundred dollars, it went from like a, I don't remember, two hundred thousand dollar project to a forty thousand dollar project, and ended up being a ninety thousand dollar project, so. Um they held a public hearing on whether the project was necessary, it was deemed necessary, uh and then each um resident in the area of this work was sent this with their apportionment on it. And they had a date and time where they could go and dispute it. Um I believe Mr. Winley ended up doing it uh evenly, rather than by uh frontage. Uh there would have been some people paying like twenty thousand dollars and other people paying forty bucks, so I think he went straight across the board fifteen hundred and seventy three dollars per person over ten years, um.
Just the people on the list, right?
Mm-hmm.
That doesn't like cover all, that's me, we are a community, you know.
Fifteen, fifteen hundred ninety six dollars over ten years, so. Uh we've had a couple come in. Uh obviously, this is a drainage district or drain commission project.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it isn't just.
Once again, maintenance.
Why, you know, that's what I'm saying, why is this giving it thrown on their shoulders when, I mean, it is kind of the the county drain, right?
And that's, that's how they operate, that's how they, that's how they get their money.
I think that was through taxes and that too, some of it, so it's like, how do you justify?
They do have a budget.
Doing it, so.
So how much, uh do we have, the thirteen thousand five hundred we can?
That we can pay?
Yeah.
We'll find it.
Yeah.
We don't have a choice.
How much, how much do we save in interest?
Pardon?
How much, how much do we save in interest?
If we pay it straight up, I mean, we're gonna pay it straight up or something, I have to count it, but.
I'll make a motion to pay the thirteen thousand five hundred dollars for Benton Street Drain.
Support.
The whole call?
Paul Jenderski?
Yeah.
Jamie Kendall?
Yes.
Darcy McSmay?
Yes.
Edgar Tiedoff?
Yes.
Michael Nesvet?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Troy Free?
Yes.
Item C Direct Deposit Policy.
Before I draft any policy, I'd like some approval first, um I'd like to move all new hires, future hires to direct uh deposit only, rather than checks. There's been a wide variety of nefarious actions towards uh small municipalities trying to bring up fraudulent behavior based on checks. Um say that you cash your check, I mean, people trying to cash them twice on their phone, or their phone, and it creates a problem with our bank reconciliation. Uh there's been people finding, you know, you you put your check on your phone, and soon you you throw away the check, people have been stealing those checks and trying to recreate them. Uh, up to the tune of ninety thousand dollars for some municipalities I've heard, so. I'd like to get rid of that fraudulent and just, it's safer, it's secure, it's instant.
It's easier.
It's easier, um, we are a state that.
But don't, you, don't you think some people have reasons they don't want direct deposit?
That's why I'd, I'd like some direction before I move forward with the policy. I think all new hires, most new hires will be.
You can't tell me things haven't been hacked, I mean, someone not even just backed me, the hospital up in Bay City just got hacked out of one of their, there's all sorts of stuff.
Correct.
You, you can't stop it all.
Correct, this just sets us up. This just secures us a little bit.
Do we, do we have, so we offer it right now currently?
We offer it, you can't.
Roughly how many, is it fifty percent taken right now, is it more than that, less than that?
More than that.
More than that?
There's only a few, that's why I'd do it going forward. I wouldn't make anybody do it now, but future hires, it's twenty twenty-four. You know, I think back to the days when I rewrote the personnel policy in Charleston County, it used to be of a, if you go on vacation and you weren't gonna be gone, you'd get your check before you left for vacation. As a good faith, like you're an employee here, cash this, yeah, I'm gonna have vacation, I need that money, there wasn't direct deposit, wasn't a thing. Now, it's, you know, obviously technology, and I, I get it, you know, you, you can go to the bank and take the money out and put it underneath your mattress if you're so inclined.
So I'd say some people just don't trust it, you know, old school people, some of them.
There is an option, if we, we drafted this policy by state law, um, that we could give them like a gift card. At least a gift card with their.
Giving wires?
Every, nope, like every week. Uh, the only rules and laws against it, I believe we can't charge them a fee to do so.
Hmm, interesting.
But I'd like to draft that and bring it to you, think about it, um, just going forward, you know, nothing changes for current employees, but.
Well, I say I like it myself.
Just to save us from.
Not everybody's gonna agree with that.
Right, obviously you can get hacked, but it's easier to do it when it's on the bank side rather than, you know, replicating our check side. Just something to ponder, probably say, uh, just safer for the village.
Probably a lot easier though.
For our last chief's meeting, there was three different departments that talked about the same situations, having check frauds dealing with this type of situation.
I don't, I don't see an issue with it. I would lock, the fire department went to direct deposit, still as an option, you could get a check, but, I mean, I don't even get past that at work anymore, it's all electronics, you know.
There's savings too.
There's savings when you do it.
I think some people don't like to get forced into the digital world.
Nope, I'll, I'll bring it, you know, just wanted you guys every month to think about it, research if you'd like.
Item D, suggest trick or treat Halloween hours.
It's not a village holiday, but, uh, in years past, we've suggested for safety purposes, um, the hours, um. It's, it's been five thirty to seven thirty the last two years. I've, I saw a Facebook memory from twenty fourteen where it was five thirty to seven thirty as well. Um, I've heard, we've had suggestions, people were talking about coming to make it six to eight, they're not here, um, but.
Too dark.
It is your, the floor is yours.
We got a roster of five thirties.
The last two years have been five thirty, seven, all the information I could find going back to fourteen was five thirty.
Has anybody ever complained about the five to seven?
Just one person on Facebook.
Hmm, yeah, that's not changing.
But some people like it that early because maybe Chesne's hours and you could double dance.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, gosh, more than.
Halloween is a tricky thing too, I don't know, I think it's safe.
Again, it's not a bill sanction event, it's not a holiday, it's just suggested. I mean, if you leave your light on and make, you still have king size kick ass, they'll show up.
I think we get more complaints if we changed it, so I'll keep it. I'll make a motion, we keep the Halloween hours five thirty and seven thirty.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Item E, exhibit A, safe routes to school.
Uh, as Mark mentioned, we were required to submit a quarterly report. Obviously, the state's fiscal calendar is September thirtieth, October one, so on October one, we were supposed to submit our quarterly report to ensure that we receive the funding. Uh, this would be a project in, I believe, fall of twenty twenty-six if we do everything right. Uh, it's a one point two million dollar project, nine hundred fifty-three thousand dollars in grant funds. This is to keep the project going with the engineering, uh, professional services from, from Spicer. Obviously, they're working with us hand in hand, we've gone with Spicer years past due to the fact that when you get a quote from Spicer, you normally pay what the quote says. We haven't had a lot of, very few contract change orders, which a lot of municipalities or firms, when I worked at the, the state, uh, Design and Construction Division, they'd come in and lowball just to get the contract, and then they'd contract change order the hell out of you for an extra million dollars. Or, you know, then there came a thing where it was minority hires and veteran preference was the state law that they had good intentions, but they needed to rework it because they would just hire a veteran off the street with no experience, say he's the CEO, president, then they'd get the bid because your veteran owned company. Uh, so this is one way of, the reason that we've been moving forward, they've done a lot of great work. Mitchell and I have still regular communication daily. Uh, even on the weekends when I call them and need something, for instance, on Saturday, I called and said, I need a topo on the backside of Coal Miners Park, I need it within two weeks. He called me first thing this morning, six thirty AM, I don't know why he's up so early.
He's got a young baby.
Yeah, that's, well, that's maybe that I was up. Here is the exhibit A, to keep moving forward with safe routes.
Is everybody looking to approve?
We're looking to approve.
Our motion approved.
I'll support.
Roll call vote.
Paul Jenderski?
Yes.
Jamie Kendall?
Yes.
Darcy McSwain?
Yes.
Edgar Tiedoff?
Yes.
Michael Nesvet?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
Troy Free.
Item F, drone show.
So, I've been talking to different people in town and getting to know some people, and a lot of people are up in arms because we're spending the money where on a drone show. So, explain where the funds are coming from, if you would, Hart.
The government-wide financial statements include not only the village itself, but the legally separate entity of the Downtown Development Authority, for which the village is financially accountable for financial information for its component, this is in our audit. Um, so Downtown Development Authority, the members of the governing board of the Downtown Development Authority are appointed by the village council. The issuance of bonded debt and levying of taxes by the DDA must be approved by the village council, we don't have any debt. The village also has the ability during the budget process to review what their plans and procedures are. The DDA is also bound by state law, that's where they come from. Uh, and they must hold two informational meetings every year explaining their projects, their goals, their wants, their wishes. Uh, the DDA is statuary required, as I mentioned, but they are follow under TIFs, Tax Increment Financing, or TIF plans, and it serves as a guide for the continued development of the downtown district. Um, so TIF is a procedure that allows municipalities to capture the additional or incremental taxes from property as it increases in value. So if property goes down, they don't get any money, if property increases, they get money. Uh, again, if you were paying a thousand dollars and then you pay a thousand thirty, and you live within that district, the DDA gets that thirty, the village still gets the thousand. Uh, so the property owners continue to pay taxes as usual, but a portion of the money is diverted to pay for developmental activities. These activities are items that are, uh, a new project or the village of St. Charles would not be able to otherwise support financially. What can TIF pay for? Tax Increment Financing can pay for a variety of things depending on what the authority is used. In St. Char- Charles, the primary TIF authority is the DDA, in other cities, the DDA, and they might have a Bronfeld Development Authority are the primary authorities. The key, key differences are as follow, DEA, uh, the eligible properties within the district we're touching, uh, key eligible activities, market research, feasibility studies, infrastructure, streets, water, sewer within the district, streetscape improvements, things that they've all talked about, park improvements, public parking should they wanna wish to, elevators to be DEA, uh, rent subsidies for, and business loans or business grants beside improvement, marketing and promotion. Whereas the Bronfeld Re-Development Authority, we don't have, they can do basically infrastructure, public parking, property acquisition, site plan reviews and cost of environmental analysis. So. It's a different fund, it is completely separate entity, you can meet the first Friday of the month at seven forty-five AM right here. It is a nine-member board. When I got here, it was Bob Burns, Jim Dillamister, who else? It is some classics.
Like the brass taxes, how much is it coming out of the people's pocket to run the drone show?
Pardon?
How much money is coming out of the people's pocket to run the drone show?
It's the TIF, it's the TIF funding, so it depends on the property. The TIF.
Do we have to draw it in crayon for you?
Yeah, you do.
I mean, seriously.
Yeah, you do.
So basically, again, the Tax Increment Financing is a procedure that allows municipalities to capture the additional. So if you paid a thousand dollars in taxes to the village, your taxes go up, thirty bucks, so.
The DDA is paying how much and we're paying how much?
The village is paying nothing.
The what?
Nothing from the village. This is all DEA TIF funds.
I thought we were.
Within the Downtown Development District, no.
What was explained to me is we were paying for half of that, the DDA was picking up half of it.
Oh, that was for the slip set, the shipping and the swing, as well as the fishing pier, I believe.
Fishing pier, yeah.
So then we are, they've mis- misunderstood, misinformed, because just last I knew, we were paying for half of that.
No, sir.
No, DDA is gonna pay for it all. Not misinformed, misunderstood.
Pardon? So Jim is just outside the district, I think his village taxes went up thirty-four dollars. So if they, the DDA would collect that thirty-four dollars, he'd still pay the same amount to the village. And that, that's yearly, uh, obviously, one village tax.
I heard the same thing, people were concerned about paying, well, we got.
Okay.
Sewers and that that are plugged up and whatever, that, that was the concern, is we're spending more money where we shouldn't have, where we should be going to infrastructure in people's homes.
I understand the misunderstanding.
Yeah, that's what people think, and that's why I asked you to explain that.
Yep, no problem, happy to.
Next.
And, and they are required by, again, state law to, they're audited, same way we are, we have to submit it, we have to put it on our website, we have to submit to the state yearly. So that there's nothing nefarious going on, it's used for the purposes of the TIF funding.
Gotcha.
Thanks, Hart.
Item G, drainage.
You guys are looking at each other, who's gonna go first?
Me.
So drainage?
That's you.
Take a five-minute break, if you guys wanna walk outside, I gotta set this up. Gals. So what I'm, what I'm gonna do is, um, as we heard last week, or it was week before Friday, whatever, um, we did some investigation over, for Jim. And I've got a lot of water problems, so I went over there the next day trying to see what was happening. These are the streets, right here, and the catch basin here, and this is notes from the people that collected the data, I didn't draw this, this is the data they gave me. So, on the sketch, because they numbered it and there's videos that you'll see with these numbers. So there was a catch basin right there at Saginaw and Hosmer, and it was plugged full, solid. We backed it down, and when we backed it down, there was a pipe down there, but there was a huge mass of rubble that was holding it. I mean, the dirt up, and I don't know when the last time it was ever opened up, but it was causing, there was no drainage, so. So one to two. Just shows, and now I'm having technical difficulties. Alright, so I gotta close.
Education?
Okay. So the catch basin, this is the pipe going to another large pipe, and you'll see when it gets to the end, that, that, that looks great. There was a little bit of dirt in this one, but it wasn't too bad.
Which way is that heading? Towards town or out of town?
Uh, towards.
North?
Yes, north. So it comes into a manhole, and that's the outlet, we didn't look at the outlet or anything, but it looked open, it looked pretty good. So this one was at Flint and Charles, which was plugged solid with dirt. So there was dirt, a pipe, and plugs solid with dirt. We got it clean.
You jetted it up to what the manhole?
Yeah, we backed down and then ran the jetter.
Did that company get their pipe back?
Pardon me?
Did that company get their pipe back?
It was a nozzle, yeah, yeah.
Explain what we're looking at?
So there's separated joints in it, it's not perfectly straight, but this doesn't work too bad. Like I say, this, it was, it was packed a hundred percent.
Is that what we're looking at right there, pack, pack?
No, this is a joint. I'm just, I'm kinda fast forwarding through here. So this is all after? It's a broken pipe. That right there is the next section that's going, it's three and four, and it's going from, on Flint, on the north side of the road, from down to Saginaw, from Charles to Saginaw, that piece.
Why are we reover at Charles?
Is that by MJ Automotive, where is that at?
Pardon me?
I'm trying to figure out where this is at, MJ Automotive?
So, yeah.
MJ Automotive is right here.
So where are we at here?
Right here, right there, that's the manhole.
So this is headed towards Fox, on those.
Right. This was, you can see the lines up, the white, that was all solid dirt. Go ahead.
Did that, did that other frame you just showed, why did you say Thomas Township?
They, they came down from Thomas Township, you'll see it says St. Charles, he didn't change the heading, that's where they've been working. So that, there's. So, that, there's a point repair there, it was dug up at some time, that's what the PVC is. So, as we go down the line, and again, being solid packed with dirt, it, they emptied, I think, three times, right, Jason? Yeah, three times, had a little line, it was just solid packed with dirt.
Well, I'd say people are looking, this is all just empty pipe. I mean, it's, what is it, what are you trying to show, Jimmy? This is all packed full solid with dirt, where with no flow? So, we have flow now, is that what you're saying?
You can see, see that dark line?
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was all dirt.
People aren't, I don't understand. I see what you're talking about, but.
Right.
There was no flow.
So, this, this is the problem, big problem in this line, and that's what held all the fines that settled in that line. Is that root ball that you'll see it here, that's a mineral deposit there. But they're coming up to it.
Do we have access to one of them cameras at any time, or no?
Pardon me?
Did the village have access to one of them cameras at any time?
Those cameras are very expensive. We don't, it would, would not be each other's problem.
If you ran into a problem, they could get a run one, no? Could we get run?
And you, people gotta know how to operate them. So, that's the root ball, and what that is, we ran into it with a camera, didn't move. Sometimes you can knock it down and all that, but it did not move. It's solid, and there's no tree there. So, how long, how many years has it been there? I have no idea. Some guys I talked to over there said, there was a big tree at one time, maybe ten years ago or more, don't know. But, if that's not removed, the same thing's gonna happen again. It's just gonna build up with debris and seal off. Now, we did a reverse, what they call a reverse is, we couldn't get past that, so we turned around and ran the camera up the other way. And ran into dirt. The truck went down to go dump and came back and put the camera and seen, had to jet it again. And we've already jetted it, probably ran that jetter ten, fifteen times up that line. And actually, I think I was talking to Jim, and that Jim come walking over, they were there, and he goes, you better come here in a minute. And the jetter got stuck, the pipe was broke. So, that put an end to that day.
Does all this have a bearing on Mr. McPhail's issue?
Because right now.
So.
We have a sister.
Yeah, so, what it was, when we, go ahead.
I, I just have a question. When you said that you were at Clinton and Charles, that doesn't even close to where Mr. McPhail's.
Charles and Flint and Saginaw.
Oh, you said Clinton and Charles. Okay, now that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, so, again, drainage, like I said, water and sewer generate revenue. It's an asset, right? They generate, and you get O and M, operation maintenance money. Storm sewer is the redhead stepchild. In the industry, that's what we call it, because it's not generating. It's taking water from the roads, but it's gotta come out of paving projects, road funds. I've seen it different ways in cities, or general funds, but it's gotta get budgeted.
It's road funds.
Pardon me?
It's road funds.
Yeah, it's roads, because it's taken, when we put our roads in, we take away all the natural water courses to the river, right? So, ditches, that's why we have ditches to carry. Catch basins all over town, piping to get that water to the river. But, it's a, I, I deal with it in big cities, small cities, Mark's, he's dealt with it. You know, it's just, it, it's very tough. But, again, it's outside out of mind until we are flooding. Does that make sense? Now, and getting him from what I saw, it's pretty ugly.
So, how do we maintain all this? This is the thing.
It's gotta start, we, we're in a floodplain.
Issues all over town.
I know.
We have to start somewhere.
Can we get to somewhere with this?
But again. So, that's why I wanted people to see this, because if that root ball is not taken out, it's gonna build up and seal off again. We're gonna get very little flow through there. Go ahead.
Can I just say, at the same time, we did the same thing with the sanitary sewer, like over on Sunview, and there's a couple of other places, that are completely black. Now, what's more important, a black sanitary sewer that we have, or a black storm drain that we have? I mean, you've gotta make choices here at that.
I.
Sunview needs to be done, those people have backups all the time, because their sanitary sewer looks just about like that, only I think worse.
Wasn't hard.
Pardon?
On some view, the sanitary sewer would worse than that.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
And, so that's a project, and I don't think that's till, what, next year, the year after?
I mean, we're, we're so ahead of the game with these grants.
Yeah.
Phase two is not supposed to start till twenty twenty-eight.
Okay.
So...
So, you're, that's, that's the choices you guys have to make.
Correct, and, and previous councils have said, and this is in, this is page five of the SAW grant. Since there's a lack of funding for stormwater assets, the village has been operating the stormwater collection system at a low level, level of service. The village has reacted to drain issues and flooding as they occur. Uh, this reactionary method is a way to keep the system functioning, but not improving. Until a stormwater funding mechanism becomes available, the village plans to continue implementing a case-by-case reactionary method of operation and maintenance. Therefore, no significant capital improvements are scheduled at this time. However, we do recommend that the remainder of the stormwater collection system be mapped, cleaned, and televised, uh, and assessed for condition.
And what are you reading from right now?
This is the swamp report from November twenty nineteen. It was a grant, I believe, with Spicer.
The SAW grant, is that what you're?
Yeah, yep, yep. So, that was the, the method of previous boards.
That's the county's.
Yeah, yep.
But, you know, again, so much of this stuff outside out of mind, right?
Right.
If we get heavy rains or whatever.
So, because of Mr. Freed, you know, I own Michigan Infrastructure Council Champions Program. I'm in a class to get a license here to learn about asset management, and it says, you gotta have the flexibility to react to emerg, uh, emergencies, uh, but not selfish complaints. That was asset management number one. I have one more hour to go and get a license. Uh, I've got the asset module and how to use the ARMS tool. So, it's something to think about, for sure.
It definitely is, winter floodplain. I mean, until it affects you.
So, so the, the way to correct it is, we need to raise everybody's property tax twenty percent, so we can get this stuff done, fingers? Cause we don't have the money.
We.
If that's the only way you're gonna get these ones done, is raise property tax, right?
DC and budget. I'm not talking about that right now, I don't know, I'm just saying, we gotta figure it out, at the village.
The money now to budget, not gonna have the money to budget next year, if you don't get the money somewhere.
You need to take some out to fix the stuff where you're gonna have a bigger.
They're looking at pictures and talking about arguing, you know?
So.
It's good to see.
Why am I on drainage real quick? This is the ditch flooding. That address is twelve six hundred at the corrode. And it seems like every meeting, I've been attacked. And that's okay. It's First Amendment free speech, right? So, this was May eighteenth. Somebody FOI my email, May eighteenth, this is May eighteenth, okay? And I had called again, two. Twenty twenty. So, both my neighbors, sump pumps were being overtaken, and I was watching my crop, okay? I didn't have a sump pump. I left, hold on, I'm, I'm talking. I left, I went to Home Depot and got a sump pump to drop in, and I have an access to my crawl space. And I opened that door, flex tube, set it out there. Right here, you can see that side, it was plugged solid. And.
One solid with what?
Well, we'll see. So, here's the pictures, again, there's no, on the left side, there's no water coming. It's flooding out that gentleman's property. So, this is May eighteenth, twenty twenty, this is the text with Don Ackerman. I sent him the address, I went and found it, they were busy dealing with water all over. I drove down the road, and I seen culvert plugged up. I sent pictures and the address to Don. Would appreciate it. He said, if we can try, they're trying to get water out there, there's a lot going on. He texts me back and said, it's open for now, but it was full of beer and whiskey bottles and all kinds of garbage, but it's running. I'm not saying it was your whiskey bottle, the beer bottle, the garbage, but it was your culvert, Kevin. Exactly, every day. But that's why maintenance, it's not a bad, not a bad thing, you know?
Can you show the picture after it was opened up, what it looks like?
I didn't have one, those were before, I didn't go down in the evening. You said it was open, I said, thank you, Don. You don't.
Mr. Freed, my issue was not in regards to whether or not you had water. It was that you stated in a meeting that you had no water ever.
I didn't have water. So.
But in your email, you stated you did have water.
Because I was watching, and I did not want to get flooded out.
One is true, one isn't true.
Regina, when you and Don, and then Don goes to the guy that built my house and runs into him, and.
I didn't know that.
Hold on a minute, at Home Depot and ask him, does Troy have a sump pump? Why did Don ask Steve Schor, who built my house?
I have no idea.
I'm just, so that's why, what I did is, I text Don after that meeting, the last meeting, I said, Don, come on over to my house. And look, we're discharge line is for sump pump. Never been one. Never had one.
That wasn't my issue. I just found a discrepancy that were exactly opposite statements, and that concerned me as to whether or not you had told us one or the other.
Okay. So, I'll finish here. The drainage system in our village must be addressed as a top priority. We are situated in a floodplain, and residents have been voicing concerns about flooding for years. Unfortunately, leadership has continuously deferred addressing these issues, leading the community to cope with periodic flooding. We did have adequate storm sewers. The issue has always been budgeting and scheduling manpower for routine maintenance. It's no longer acceptable to dismiss the problem with statements like, it drains eventually. We need a comprehensive plan to resolve the underlying issues in our drainage system. Specifically, I've raised concerns about our drainage being tied into the county drain. The pump station over behind Franks is discharging to the county drain, and there's a root ball in it. Jason seen it years ago, in twenty seventeen, right? I tried taking it out, right? I was right there, I had the tools and everything, and I was told, no, it's county drain. So, what that does is, it causes people flooding. It's not, it, it's not right. I raised concern about our drainage being tied into the county drain. Should we reclaim responsibility for the drainage system, including discharge line to the river? There's a known root mass blocking the discharge line that's causes flooding on that side of town. Yet, has anything been done to resolve it? I think we need to schedule a meeting with the county, come up with something. We take the line back over, but for people flooding, when we know about the problem, that's, that's a problem. For years, this issue has been acknowledged, but never meaningfully discussed or resolved. This ongoing inaction is unacceptable. Our leadership needs to allocate resources and initiate a plan to fix this, rather than continuing to defer these decisions. Does that make sense?
Maybe.
Huh?
No, man, no, he's right.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we're moving on. School, department reports, DPW. Oh, yeah. Goes back looking at Don for a second.
Yes, Jason.
Okay, last month in water. I gotta take my glasses off, cause I can't see. There we go. Last month, we pumped four million five hundred and thirty-five thousand gallons of water. We fixed the two-inch water line in the corner of Flint and Cole and located, and he kind of stole my thunder. I said over four hundred, he said three thirty, shut offs. For the identification project and the GPS. In the sewer, we pumped three million nine hundred and fifty-four thousand gallons. We fixed the sewer lid on Maple, mowed the lagoons, dumped pond number three. In streets, we kept the patch dug out and replaced a large patch on Maple, swept streets, mowed road sides. Dug twenty-five holes for the new trees, kept the trees, the flower pots uptown watered, picked up brush, set up barricades, tables for the downtown days. Kept trash dumped, weed whacked and sprayed on the backside of Franks, and raised a catch basin on Hosmer Street. And in parks, we mowed grass, picked up brush piles from consumers, kept the garbage dumped, bathrooms and pavilions cleaned. Weeded and cleaned up waterfall at Lumberjack Park, fixed pipes on one of the waterfall pumps and replaced the pump. It burned up on us. Finished stonework on the riverbank for the new fishing pier. Wired fence back up at the dog park and put up two new, or a new camera at Coal Miners Park. And we responded to about twenty-five service calls and countless fakings.
And are we down one DPW right now?
Yeah, we're down, we're down one guy.
That's impressive.
But not the whole month.
I just wanna make a comment to the DPW. I grabbed resumes that were turning as of.
Today.
That's still the same?
Yep.
Okay, I, I reviewed the red, you know, obviously, there's other people making decisions, but personally, his resume, to take Don's position, knocks all the ones out, out of the park. And I can tell you, working with many different municipals, the knowledge that is in Jason's head right now, he worked beside Tito for how many years? So, he can say, that used to be an oak tree over there, and right over there, that's where we had the break. He, he knows that, he worked in it sixteen years ago, or eighteen years ago. So, on top of that, I talked to some of the DPW people, and it seems that there's a pretty strong feeling that they can get by with three guys. Ninety percent of the time, maybe? What, what do you think?
Eighty, ninety percent.
Eighty, ninety percent. So, we have that ten, fifteen, twenty percent, where nine-one-one, we get three feet of snow, or there's an eighteen-foot sewer collapse. But my thought is, is we get T and M numbers from local contractors, whether it's Walker, Eric, and have a list to help. They already have, haven't they? We probably do, right, I'm sure.
That's great, I just want the DPW report, that's all, okay?
We can't say.
You've had, you guys had ample time, enough spills, okay? I'm sorry, but I wanna hear the report, and I wanna get on with it.
He was done. He's done, I'm just gonna make one more comment.
No, no, you're done, you're done.
You're done. That's a bunch of crap right there. Is they need a raise. I agree, especially people with CDLs, I could get him a job for twenty-five dollars right now. Freedom of speech, let's talk about it.
Police Department report, please.
Schedule's a little bit different now. Not too many, there's not, we're losing hours of coverage, obviously, because Ethan's gone. Calls didn't go away, we still had forty-six calls. Um, Ethan was here for half of this month, so. Uh, activities went down, but that's because we're not having night-ten activities like we normally would. Um, terms of calls, you probably noticed the one that says robbery on it, if you look at the address. You can kinda see, it was a deal between male and a female in a purse or a wallet, some money was stolen. Title, the, the title of it looks a little bit worse than what it actually is. It's on page one, at the, at second from the top, if you're looking at it, and you can look at the address. Lot of assists. The first one, the CSE, it was something, an issue that happened on the school bus. And the third one is another issue with the school bus, happens to do with the same student that's being dealt with. And need to assault her both the last days. Any questions about any of the calls? So far, so good from Skylar at the Academy, nothing but good things, haven't had the. haven't had the guy call me and say that they're potential flunking out or anything like that, so. She's basically ready to go with all of her stuff, just waiting for the guy at the Academy at the end of the year.
How much more time she have?
Till December, end of December. Yeah, end of December. Michelle's plugging right on at school, busy as always every day up there. Lot of our reports come from her, from being there, but she's in the thick of it. She was excited but not excited. She got to break up a fight, but she was excited that she actually was able to break up the fight because the guys were bigger than her, so. That's what she was excited about, not because she had to break up the fight, because she was able to. Any questions?
Thank you for all you're doing. Miss you too.
Building inspector code enforcement report, please.
All right, I'll make the short, sweet. We issued two permits. Last month, one building for demolition and then an electrical for a service update. There were nine complaints that were handled. The property on Flint, we did get a thirty due, uh, excuse me, thirty-day court order to clean it up. The owner did not show up for court, so it was a default judgment. Our attorney was able to also get a five-hundred-dollar collection fee to cover our attorney fees because this is the fourth time we've been there for this property. At the end of the thirty days, between now and then, I'm going to be soliciting bids for the cleanup. And we'll, I'll bring it to you guys for approval on probably the lowest bidder, but it'll be up to you guys. And the costs of the cleanup will be billed to the owner if it's not paid. This is through the court order, it rolls onto the taxes. Did have a couple of fence complaints. One of them has been handled. The other, I had to send a second notice. Have a couple of trash rubbish complaints, had to send second notices on those. And did have two that were resolved, so that's what I got.
Scott, didn't you say earlier when we were talking about six thirty-two that the, the judge was gonna order that attorney fees was gonna go on it as well this time since we're doing it again?
That's the extra five hundred.
Okay, I was, I missed it if you'd mentioned it. I just wanted to make sure you mentioned that.
Hey Scott, I was told too that at six thirty-two that there's no electricity in the house and run a generator.
Yep, first I've heard of that.
I had the unfortunate, I was going in the house the other day, there was electricity in the house.
There was?
Yeah. I don't know where he was getting it from, but he had power in the house.
Public comment? Lady in the back there.
My name is Donald Duchard. I live at one twenty Woodlawn. Mr. Hart, I think you've done a marvelous job with all the grants. I know that grants are horrible to have to deal with. Thank you so much. I've been a resident on Woodlawn for thirty-five years and we appreciate all your hard work. Ed, I think that you are doing a very good job. I've known you since you were quite a young man and I think you're a work in progress and I'd like to see the work that you're doing. I would also like to mention the Thurston family for all that they have done downtown with the, you know, updates that they've made on the buildings there. It makes the village look much nicer. And I would also like to speak to some of you about civility. I was a fourth grade teacher for thirty-eight years. And if any of my students had acted like some of you act at this meeting, I would have been appalled, just appalled. You have the trust of this community in your hands. And when you choose to make foul, disgusting comments that are placed on Facebook for everyone to see about other members of this board, then I think that's sad. I think it's very sad. And I think it's very sad that some of you got elected to this board because you don't deserve to be here. You're here to represent the community. All of your petty grievances, all of your petty arguments should be left at home, taken care of. When you come here, you are citizens of this village and you represent us. And many of you, I'm very proud of. You, you've done a wonderful job, but some of you really need to go back to school, back to kindergarten and learn what kindness and being polite is all about. So that's my kumbaya. Mr. Hart, thank you again. You've done a wonderful job. Ed, keep up the good work. We're thinking of you. Mr. Nesbit, keep up the good work. Mrs. Harris, keep up the good work. And remember, election day is coming and if we're not happy, we don't vote. And that's what's important. How you conduct yourself really matters. Thank you.
Mr. McVale again?
Hopefully not take a full three minutes, but I just want to point out, this isn't my drain. It's not my storm sewer, it's not mine. This drains Charles Street, Flint, it, it's Jimmy's. He floods out. It goes down and it drains my neighbors where Diane Hedrickson lived. And I didn't even realize this, but when she moved, we helped her move all of her stuff and everything in the garage was up on pallets. Never had any idea that her garage flooded out every year from the road. For the last twenty years, it's flooded out from the road. She never once said anything, but that's the problem. Nobody comes up here and says anything. You just deal with it and you get, "We're in a flood plain. We're in a flood zone. Everybody floods." Well, we shouldn't. That's what we have a sewer for. If everybody floods, then we'll just put them on floats. I mean, that's what they do in Catch a Kid. You live in houseboats, you know? People, we, we don't have to accept it.
True.
You know, we don't have to accept it. And you, you say, you just read that off that, about maintenance. This is maintenance. There's a root ball from Charles to Saginaw. And there's a root ball in there that's gonna cause more damage. It was already plugged up three, over three-quarters. So we have to do something. You can't pass the buck and say, "Yeah, we're not gonna do it." You have to get that truck back out. You have to cut that root ball off. You have to. You know it exists. The fact that there's a root ball at the discharge past the, the pump station and it floods out every time it drains, it floods out that entire side of town. We know it exists. We've mentioned that for twenty years. "Oh yeah, there's a root ball in there. Oh yeah, there's a root ball that floods them out." Well, fix it. And you don't have to pass new taxes. We collect enough money to put in to do, do parades and plant trees and hold functions in the park. We have enough money that we can collect and say, "Okay, we're gonna put this aside and we're gonna fix that." We don't have to pass a new tax. We can just reallocate it from planting a tree or doing something to fixing it. Because if you flood, people aren't gonna move. People aren't gonna come here and we're losing people in St. Charles. They're not gonna move here. We're in a flood plain. If you can't provide drainage, I don't care if it's sewer and water, electricity, if you don't have drainage, people aren't gonna move here. And it's, I've looked at my basement walls since we've been dealing with this over the last month and I noticed that there's more cracks along the front of my house and the, on the foundation and the, and the cement. They weren't there twenty years ago when I moved in. That's from all the pressure from all that water and it's coming from the road. It's not my water. It's not mine. It's not my sump pump water. It's not a leaky faucet. It's from the road. It has to be taken care of. And I, the other thing, Chris, we disagree on a lot. We've served on the board. We disagree on everything.
We sure do.
But, uh, we always had decorum. During the meetings, we didn't scream at each other.
No, we didn't.
And we didn't agree on-
And we got along and sometimes we voted the same way.
Right, right. But we could talk through it. But that's not my water and it's destroying my investment in this community.
Thank you. Who else?
I just want to make one comment because I know that you've gotten a lot of kudos and that's very nice. But I'm sorry. I feel that there needs to be accountability. You're a council. You are the village manager's boss. And with all the complaints that I've been hearing with the drainage and the complaints that I've had through years with the drainage and I feel that things have been brushed off or they aren't addressed. If things aren't being addressed, then accountability is not being made. I agree with everybody that you guys should not be battling with each other. I agree with that one hundred percent. But let's look at further citizens and the people and their issues and address them instead of just making everything pretty. It's great to have things pretty, but we need to have things functional.
Thank you.
Mr. Duchard?
Other people spoke twice, so I'm gonna speak twice. I want to talk about the other major issue that's going on in our, in our village right now. And that's the lawsuit over the placement of campaign signs. Other, since I've got a lot of time on my hands, I'm retired, I looked up the responsibilities of somebody who's running for office. And the very first thing that is listed, it says, "It's the candidate's responsibility to check with the clerk of the place where you are running to see if there are other, any other resp, or any other ordinances or laws that affect you putting signs up in St. Charles, whatever." Now, I'm, I'm assuming that whoever put signs up this time, you did, you checked with the clerk to see. And if they told you the correct information, it says thirty days before you have to have it removed, after four days after, whatever. You should have all understood that, but if you decided, if you decided, you know what? I don't like that ordinance. And I'm putting up my signs whether you like it or not, I'm putting them up. If that's what happened here, the next person that comes up to this council and they've gotten, they've gotten a, a note about they, they have violated an ordinance and they want to come to you to talk to, to talk to you about what that ordinance and how they don't agree with it. If you've purposely violated an ordinance yourself, you have lost all credibility to judge anybody else. The other thing, I've heard lots of, lots of comments up here about you're trying to stifle my First Amendment rights. That's just one part of the Constitution. There's another part that's called separation of church and state. I am not sure who decided that it was a good idea and perfectly all right to put a sign up at the Methodist church on their property. The other thing you're supposed to do is make sure that you get okay from the homeowner because it's only supposed to be on residential properties, not businesses, for you to put that sign up there. If somebody had gone and to the Catholic, to the Methodist church and said, "Can I put a sign up here?" They would've said, "No." You can't put a sign on here, that's separation of church and state. We don't have to pay taxes because we don't get involved in politics. But somebody did it anyway. If you don't know what your job is, look it up. Read about it. Find out. We could have solved this whole issue, Mr. Freed. You're a council person. You can add anything to the agenda that you want to. You could have said at the next meeting, "I want to send, I'm gonna make a motion. I want to send ordinance, whatever it is, I don't know what the number is, back to the planning commission for review." Council would've voted on it, yes or no. If they send it back to the planning commission, you go to the planning commission. You say, "These are the reasons why I want to do this. I want, I want, I want to look at this because I think it's not a fair ordinance." They review it. It comes back to the council. Instead, your first inclination was, "I'm filing a lawsuit." I'm filing a lawsuit and one, one of the entities that you are suing is the village of St. Charles. Guess who the village is? We are. We're the village. You know who's paying for your lawsuit? We are. Didn't you ask anybody, "Would you like to use your tax money to file a lawsuit on my behalf?" No. You just filed the lawsuit and at least you could say, "Thank you for paying for this lawsuit." That's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Duchard. Anybody else?
Again, my name is Mark Westlock. I live at twelve sixty North Main Street and I've lived here for forty-one years. I'm a voter and I'm angry and so are my neighbors. I'm gonna be addressing the council with, for everyone except our new trustee. I've attended every meeting this past year. The council has had a long history of mismanagement and poor investments. I'd like to, you know, someone to tell me on the council, if they want to answer, why are we the second highest property tax rate here in Saginaw County? Any, any answers? We are. I heard a lot of complaints here and a lot of verbal complaints. I'm putting my complaints in writing. People that will want copies will be able to get copies of a report card that my neighbors and I have come up with. When we talk about property taxes, our property taxes are fifty-four percent higher than the city of Frankenmuth with a much lower level of service. Just think about that. We are trying to grow or not? Frankenmuth is growing. Why? Because they're competitive. What's the answer behind these questions? It's basically the council isn't doing their job. As I said, Frankenmuth is growing. St. Charles is not. When I first started coming to these meetings, when Chris was here, we were always comparing Frankenmuth and Chestney with St. Charles, correct?
Um, I don't think we compared them the best.
Well, when we talked about, no, I'm not attacking. What I'm saying is when we were talking about Christmas lights and things like that, we would always compare.
It was usually wages.
What I'm comparing here was, is the state equals, state equalized mileage rate that's filed with the county. Now, as I said, everybody's complaints were, were verbal complaint. I've got it in writing. I'm gonna give a copy to Hart. I'm gonna give a copy to the citizen and I'm gonna publish a copy of the report card on Facebook. This council isn't looking out for the best interest of the residents. Major changes have to be made. The bottom line is, my neighbors and I have given you a D minus as a grade of performance for this last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
No notes.
Any else?
I have something I'd like to say.
I forgot to mention the DPW and Jason, I now owe Jason two beers when he comes to trigger street. So, and, and they do. I have never seen cleaner streets in the world in my life, so.
I do have copies over here too, if they want to read it or report you.
Somebody else want to go? Oh Kathy, yes.
I just would like to say that I've been on this council for four years. When I got on this council, it was so that I could work for this council, for this community, not specific people. There's people on this council that only work for certain people or they working for themselves. I've heard nothing but negative comments, negative complaints about our village. We have a great village here. I was born and raised in this town. My parents were born and raised in this town. We've done a lot of stuff in this community over the years. Hart has worked his tail off since he has been here. He has gotten more grant money for us than any other village manager, sorry, Chris, than any other village manager. He has worked his tail off and I don't appreciate the negative comments that he's been getting and the negativity that he has received. Our community is great. We've put, we've put a new playscape in this year, last year. We have the kayak launch that's been asked forever to be out there. Fishing pier, it's there. Been asking for it forever. The DDA does great stuff downtown to make our town look good. The DDA does great stuff downtown to make our town look good. And that's just a few of the things. Look at the water project we had this year. The biggest water project St. Charles has ever had. How can you people come here week after week after week and do nothing but complain about- Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
According to you?
Well. Everybody has complaints, but guess what? I don't see any of you on a ballot to run for this position this time.
I've got one more thing to say about this report card we have on here. It's just like, who's going to do the maintenance on all these free projects that we got? Every year they got to be pulled out of the water, it's our people that are going to do it. Right, are they going to reimburse us?
I'm not arguing with you, this is my opinion.
I know, that's what I'm saying. We got, we got things on here that are costing this village money that hardly anybody uses. Now, I get down that trail all the time. And there's, I've seen two people fishing off the kayak dock. And that's all I can say. And I do think that everybody in here should think about who they're going to vote for. Vote for the person that's going to do the job, not because it's a political position. I vote for the person I want to vote for, right or wrong. If they're a Republican, a Democrat, or an independent like I am.
We're not any-
This is nonpartisan.
This is the nonpartisan.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I offended, but there are some people in here that get up doing political things. And I'm not, I'm not holding nothing against you, I agree. But there's people that get up here and talk and they got it.
Do you know how much money these people make for doing this?
Yeah. I've been in this village for a long time too.
Okay, how much do they make?
More than you do.
They make forty dollars a meeting.
I get six hundred dollars a year. To sit here and take the abuse that you give me every month. I mean, I look at the same, it's the same people. You don't like me, you don't like me, Mr. France don't like me. Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, I'm talking.
So was I, and you cut me off.
You walked away.
I was talking to people back here at the time and-
Paul.
You-
It's my turn to talk, it's my turn to talk.
I have respect for you and I like you.
Appreciate it.
But I don't like your attitude in a meeting sometimes. Because Hartman over here is the one that's got to tell you how to run the meeting.
Mr. Smith, your attitude isn't much better, so I mean, I do my best, I mean, that's it.
Don't raise and I'm raising my voice is because I don't agree with how this is being run.
Everybody's got their opinion and you're entitled to that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want a copy of this?
No, I don't.
There you go. You don't want to, that's what I figured. You don't want to work with nobody.
I don't need your- Can you remove Mr. Dzierski? He's been warned about, he's been warned about his swearing. We have a closed session. I asked for him to be removed. He swore again and he's not supposed to swear, he knows that, we signed a thing.
Okay, this last comment. You know, there is an option and that's called, you know, we can disincorporate. And we can do away with the council and go back to the government of St. Charles and Swan Creek and eliminate the village property taxes. That's an option.
Would that be like a dictatorship? That's kind of what it sounds like.
You know, we can, we can go back to the way it was before the council and before the village incorporated and we were governed under the township. The township Swan Creek, the township of St. Charles, and eliminate the property tax for the village.
Wasn't that before nineteen hundred?
Don't care, it's an option.
I think it was.
It's an option, you're complaining about this being such a strenuous job, let's do away with it.
Anybody else?
I got something to say.
Well, I was still talking. Like I said, I've been scrutinized, I've been humiliated on Facebook, you name it. And, you know, I can't read this stuff because Mr. Dzierski blocks me, so I can't read it. But I'm talking, sir. I'm still talking, sir. You know, I have kids in this community. One of them goes to a different school now because of the kind of stuff she hears in school and stuff. And it's coming from a lot of the parents and it's going down to the kids and it's just a vicious cycle, you know? It's like, I pay taxes like y'all, I pay water bill, I pay everything. I got drainage problems too. But if I complain about them, guess what, all the president gets special treatment, you know? I really don't. Once again, Paul, I really don't need your comments, okay? You've been asked numerous times to behave yourself and you don't.
No bickering.
I'm not, I'm not asking you either, Mr. Westlock.
You got my answer.
I'm, I don't need your input. I'm, I'm, I'm talking for once, okay? I listen to you.
There's no chippy, no comments from the audience now, this is, you say, board is in charge now. And you are, you are, you are, you closed that, it is off.
I'm just saying, my interest has always been for this village and its people. There's nothing in this for me, there never will be. For six hundred dollars a year, is it really worth it? To fight amongst my neighbors? I mean, come on. You people turned it into personal. I'm not, it's not personal to me. Is that funny, Mr. Kinsey? Mr. Kinsey, you walked two blocks down to confront me, so you came at me. No, I did not. So, anyhow, here I am, I'm still here, I'm not made of glass, I won't break. I'll keep, continue to do my best as your village president. Oh, and I would like to say on Halloween this year, I will be five years sober, I have not had a drop. Any people want to make fun of it, go ahead. Everybody seemed to like me better in this town when I was a down and out drunk. I hold the record in Saginaw County history for the highest blood alcohol content level, point four seven, and I'm still alive.
And you're a better person now.
I shouldn't be judged by my past. You know, these meetings shouldn't take three hours. It's nonsense. In the beginning, when I was president, everybody wanted to be my friend. Mr. LaFrance gave me a ride one day, Paul Dzierski come right to my house, calls me, leaves messages. Mr. Freed did the same thing, so did Ms. McSwain here. Everybody wanted something out of me.
You know why I do it?
I, I'm not asking for, I'm not asking for your response, I'm making it clear. You got all, you got people got all upset because I don't answer my phone. There's a reason for that, I don't talk to none of you outside of this room.
The reason I reached out-
I'm not asking for your input. I'm just trying to say, I'm just trying to say, I've been, I've been persuaded, they tried to get my vote, my persuasion, everything. That's unprofessional, I have my own opinion, I have my own mind. And this whole council should too. It shouldn't be this, this half and this half. It's clear as day what's going on here. Open your eyes and like, like somebody said, think about who you're voting for. Think about it. That's all I got, thank you.
Give me your vote for it, he's trying to shut everybody up, trying to shut our freedom of speech. He'll let people talk who's on his side, but somebody's going against him, he'll shut him down, just like he's doing to me. Yeah, we all tried to friend him at one time, he's the one that was negative and shut everything down. He's the one that cut us off as friends and council members. He's the one that's arguing about everything, so that's where we are today. I hope you do vote and I hope you vote for Jamie Kendall.
I've listened to enough of this shit.
So-
I'll read a paragraph here.
Do we need a motion for a closed session? I'll make a motion to close the public meeting.
Support.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Close the polls?